I'd like to move to place Bill 374, excuse me, I'd like to move to accept Bill Number 374 EC as substituted by the author.
On the motion without any objection, so ordered.
And again, I'd like to also further move Bill 374 substituted by the author from the second to the third reading, and I would like to discuss Bill 374.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think there were some of colleagues of mine present several years ago when I made my first attempt to move forward in the passage of a ban on the partial birth abortion procedure in Guam. It went as far as committee, and of course, there was an understanding as to why it did not progress past that point. At that particular time in the United States, there was court action that was occurring at the highest levels of the federal court system, which was the Supreme Court. And at the time, because it was an ongoing judicial process, the committee chair at the time and the members of the legislature felt that it was important to see the standing of the federal ban on partial birth abortion and where it would lead before the further movement on the bill. Several years have passed, and things have changed. The Supreme Court has ruled in the constitutionality of the federal ban on partial birth abortion. Again, working with some of my friends in the community who believed it was important at this time to put forward this piece of legislation, in particular because of the importance of setting a framework for limitations of the abortion procedure in Guam, and also because of possibilities and potentialities of the future of what may lay when it comes to federal policy in regards to abortion procedures. Madam Speaker, as the opinion of the author of the bill, I do believe, and I'm sure some of you may agree with me, that the practice of performing a partial birth abortion is gruesome, and it's an inhumane procedure that has really never been medically necessary, and I believe should be prohibited. The passage by the 108th Congress with President Bush signing the Federal Partial Birth Abortion Act of 2003 into law provided a legal direction for Guam to ban partial birth abortions in this island territory. In March 18th of 2007, the United States Supreme Court upheld this position in the landmark case of Gonzalez versus Carhart, and this was a ruling that the state may prohibit partial birth abortions that do not include the maternal health exception. The language in this bill stems from and uses as its primary influence the language of the Federal Partial Birth Abortion Ban Act of 2003, and that is 18 U.S.C. 1531, which has been upheld in Gonzalez. Partial birth abortion does pose serious risks to the long-term health of the woman, and it is not an abortion procedure that is universally embraced by the mainstream medical community. The facts indicate and support the very informed judgment of Guam that partial birth abortion is never necessary to preserve the health of a woman and poses serious risks to a woman's health and lies outside standard, the standards of medical care. Partial birth abortion poses serious risk to the health of a woman undergoing that procedure, and these risks include, among other things, an increase in a woman's risk of suffering from cervical incompetence as a result of cervical dilation, making it difficult, if not impossible, for a woman to successfully carry a subsequent pregnancy to term, an increased risk of uterine rupture, abruption, amniotic fluid embolus, and trauma to the uterus as a result of converting the child to a foot-long breach position, a procedure which according to leading obstetrics test books, there are very few, and if any indication for other than for the delivery of a second twin, and a risk of lacerations and secondary hemorrhaging due to the doctor blindly forcing a sharp instrument into the base of the unborn child's skull while he or she is lodged in the birth canal, an act which could result in severe bleeding and subsequent shock. As a result, at least 31 states have enacted bans of partial birth abortions, as did the 104th, 105th, 106th, and 108th Congresses, and the President upon signing of the Partial Birth Abortion Act of 2003 into law. Madam Speaker and members of the body, there is no credible medical evidence that partial birth abortions are safer than other abortion procedures. No controlled studies of partial birth abortions have been conducted, nor have any comparative studies been conducted to demonstrate the safety compared to other abortion methods. Furthermore, there have been no articles published in peer-reviewed journals that establish that partial birth abortions are superior in any way to established abortion procedures. And in light of this overwhelming evidence, Guam has an interest in prohibiting partial birth abortions, both Roe versus Wade and Planned Parenthood versus Casey. Both Supreme Court cases recognized a governmental interest in protecting the life of a child during the delivery process. Now, this interest arises during a partial birth abortion procedure and because labor is induced and the birthing process has begun. Partial birth abortions kill a child that is mere inches away from becoming a person. The government has a heightened interest in protecting the life of the partially born The public's perception of the appropriate role of a physician during the delivery process is undermined by the aborting of a child in a manner that purposefully seeks to kill the child inches from personhood, and the resulting protections conferred upon the fully born child. Partial birth abortion is disturbingly similar to the killing of a newborn infant and blurs the line between infanticide and abortion. This legislation reinforces the line at birth between abortion and infanticide, that the Supreme Court established in Roe versus Wade, and this legislation draws a bright line that clearly distinguishes abortion and infanticide that preserves the integrity of the medical profession and promotes respect for human life. The vast majority of babies killed during the partial birth abortion process are alive up through the very end of the procedure. It is a medical fact that unborn infants subjected to partial birth abortion can feel the pain when subjected to painful stimuli. Furthermore, an unborn child, perception of pain is even more than that of newborn infants and older children. Madam Speaker and members of this body, I know every one of us, and this is a difficult bill. It's an issue that is difficult not only in this community, but in other states and in the nation. And with it, each one of us has a reason for why they either for or against abortion. And there are many issues. There are many issues that deal with folks, and they ask that question, when does life When do you supplant the rights of a woman to make a choice in her body with that of the rights of a person, and whenever that person can be determined a person, either by that individual, or as the case has been determined by the Supreme Court? Madam Speaker, I will tell this body, I do have a belief, I do believe, and that's just one senator with one opinion, that life begins at conception. This bill is only one component of my belief and my plans to try to at least set limitations on the abortion procedure in this community based on what legal remedies we have that are currently held, both constitutional, in the federal apparatus and federal law, as well as in local jurisdictions. It's interesting when you ask yourself the question of when life begins, and none of us really know that, none of us knows, I believe it begins with conception, but as science starts to analyze from the farthest corners of the universe and answer questions about the farthest corners of the universe, or the smallest atom or element that the electron microscope can see, things that we've sometimes believed in as faith have indeed become fact. I had a nice discussion with someone in regards to the issue of abortion, and one thing is very clear with the advent of genome technology and the identification of DNA as a blueprint for every individual that lives in this planet. There's over six and a half billion people live in this planet, and that's a lot, that's a number that's hard to fathom, unless of course you're working on the United States federal budget. But five and a half, six and a half billion people, not one of them has an identical DNA code. And as we, modern science and research has shown, something miraculous does happen upon conception, where the DNA code that is specific and unique to the mother and the DNA code that is specific and unique to the father, upon conception, there is an exchange of DNA, and there is cellular generation and multiplication that starts from conception. And even at that point, they may not be able to speak to us, that small little fetus, but it has its unique signature that makes it much different from any other cell in the mother that is holding that child in its womb, or the father. It's a fact. Since Roe versus Wade, there have been between 45 and 50 million abortions in the United States alone. That's about the number of civilian casualties in World War II. That's the number of residents in the population, I know a lot of us travel around the United States, mostly in the West Coast, but for folks who have visited California, Oregon, Washington, Alaska, Hawaii, Guam, the Northern Marianas, the American Samoa, that's the population of all those states and territories of the United States. On average, there's about one and a half million abortions in the United States annually. The estimates worldwide are anywhere from 10 to 15 million abortions annually. One of the things about a democracy is protecting the rights of the individual, and whether it's an individual that is disabled, or elderly, or folks such as us. But it's a democracy also built on the rights of everyone, including the woman. Most important thing is you can protect the rights of everyone, and an individual, and a right to choose, but once that right to choose goes into, and conflicts and contradicts the rights of another's individual's right to live, then there's a problem. I know I'm only stating it as one individual. This point, again, there are laws that are governing this territory under the United States, and there are federal laws that hold primacy over us. But has been evidence just in recent court, other cases that deal with federal relations with our local government, some maybe not as deep and as emotional, some laws just may be legal, but not morally right. I will continue to do what I can do as a senator, as an individual in this community, to work towards protecting the rights of our unborn, and this is the first step. And Madam Speaker and members of this body, I ask you to support this legislation, this particular piece of legislation is something that can at least pass the litmus test even with the current federal laws that are governing this territory. So I ask you for your support, and I also ask, if I can, I don't know whether this is the proper time, but I would like to make an amendment to add on as a sponsor of the bill, Vice Speaker Shimizu, again, who's been such a big advocate for life in the years past. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion and to add Senator Shimizu's name, without objections, ordered. Senator Tina Mune Barnes, you're next. One moment, clarification in terms of...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a point of clarification, I want to speak about later on, but just a point of clarification on to the author in Section 91A 106, on the criminal penalty. Are we still, are we going to be going section by section, or...
No, we're not. We're just doing the entire bill, and he, as the primary author, was given first priority to speak on the bill, but when you do speak, I think that will be the time for you to ask for clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Lohan. Senator Tina Mune Barnes.
Señorita Masi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this bill. Madam Speaker, I just want to state for the record that I do support this Bill Number 374, which will, if passed, be called the Partial Birth Abortion Ban Act of 2008. And at this time, before I proceed with my personal testimony, if I can, for the record, be added on as a sponsor to this Bill 374.
Objection, then, so ordered.
You know, Madam Speaker, when this bill came about, as a matter of fact, before this bill came about, I was visited by a nurse, a registered nurse of Guam who'd been in the nursing profession for, I guess, over 20 years of her life, and when she at first approached me, she had asked me if I would support the efforts of banning this partial birth abortion, and what my sentiments were on abortion itself, and I went on to share with her my perspective, and I told her how I would support the efforts, and I said that I think it's important, as Guam has been known, Guam is in its entirety to be family-oriented, it has a matrilineal society. When I was growing up, it was, I mean, you know, mothers, you could go and ask your father if you could do anything, and the first thing my dad would reply to me was, go check with your mother. So I already knew who was boss in the house. But even more so, growing up here on Guam, the values of family, the values of tradition, the values of just spirituality being close-knit here on Guam, I'm personally glad to say that I've been blessed in being raised in a family with all the love, caring, understanding. As a matter of fact, my father once said that the definition of Muniya meant loving, caring, and sharing, to have the whole family entwined, and being able to share everything and be close to all the other siblings that we had, as coming from a family of nine, I would say biological, but having over 20 brothers and sisters from not just within Guam, but within our neighboring Pacific Islands, for them to be a part of our family, I truly believe and continue to believe that I am blessed in richness with that. But I came to the public hearing, Madam Speaker, and I came a little bit late, or quite late, had some pre-engagements, and I was listening to a colleague of mine who spoke intently about a relative, a close relative he had, and how this relative had so many children and probably could not afford the pregnancy that she had. And with that being said, the family was made aware of it, and that his own immediate family said, you know, I think it's important that we accept and take on and help adopt this child that will come into place. And as he was sharing that story, you know, it came to heart because that was a part of my family, and my uncle Jesse got really personally emotional about it, and I said, you know, I really didn't understand how Renee came in, my Auntie Renee came into the picture, but as I was hearing my colleague speak about the story, I said, what a blessing that Auntie Renee is here with us, continues to be a mother, have her own children, and have her own family now. I said, what a gift that was paid, what a gift to be blessed, to have the support, to know that at one time, not because you weren't wanted, but because there were so many other circumstances within that family arena that couldn't have had them afford to take care of another child, but for another family member to come up to the plate and take full responsibility, and know that love and nurturing, and knowing that that was going to come into play. Very close, very close and very dear, another very dear near story to me. Madam Speaker, there was this teenager who, at the age of 17 and a half, became pregnant, and this teenager had everything going for her. She had a modern career, she was involved in various social activities and committees within the school, within the village level, had grades enough to accept a scholarship from the University St. Martin's College in Washington, had received praises for reports that she had done, for the work that she had done within the community and with their school involvement, and everything went going for, everything went right, couldn't have had it any better, being in a very good family, maintaining her grades, working outside, working within the village community, and as far as a volunteer, being close to the church, but also had a personal relationship. And truthful enough, this teenager became pregnant, and was very, very afraid to share with family and friends what had happened to her, but knowing that every thing that was going for her that was right was probably going to be taken away because of the mere fact of her being pregnant. And first, denial came, second, it was like, what would the relatives say? Third was, what about the education? Fourth was, what about all the contracts that you had already signed? All of that was just going to walk, just be thrown out of the door because of that young teenager being pregnant. And you know, Madam Speaker, I've never, when that story was being revisited just recently, I have to say that I thank God for the belief that I have today. I thank God for the faith and the blessing that has been bestowed, not just to me, but to all my family members who support it and who understood, and who knew that no matter what the consequences were, that everything would be okay. But to also better understand, through thick and thin, no matter what is said, no matter how is said, that your family will always love you. And Madam Speaker, the choices that are made today, it is because of the blessing of a strong family unity, and because of that unity, I do stand here to say that I'm a proud mother of three. My daughter is now 28 years old, very good job. My son is also here with me, and my baby, who just graduated from Notre Dame, is also going to the university. And I had not been given that mirror of opportunity, to at least be given the chance to make that choice, but that choice that I almost gave up on because I didn't know where to turn, Madam Speaker, I don't think I could be standing here today telling and sharing a story that I've never shared with anyone else besides my twin sister, that I chose life, because first and foremost, life begins at conception, life is precious, and life is the very vital gift that our heavenly Father has given to us. So I want to say that I stand before you again, and to our listening audience this afternoon, that I support this measure because I know that a lot of times when decisions are not made because of so much confusion and because of how life treats us today, that sometimes that journey may not be right for that individual, or that young teenager, or that young female who really wants to try and her heart. So if I can share that story today and open this life, this chapter in my book for our community, I know that they can at least open their heart to know that this will be another way to protect life, as God has blessed us here. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Senator B.J. Cruz?
Thank you, Madam Chair Speaker, for allowing me to speak on this bill. I had announced at the public hearing that I would support 374 if it had included a, the exception that was provided in the federal statute. The authors graciously included the limitation. I have concerns about the limitation, having a, having two doctors needing to approve it. But I'm pouring the inquiry with the, with the author before I start my comments. Was there a reason why the limitation that was provided in this does not mirror the, the limitation that is provided in the federal statute?
Will the author yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I will, I will reply to the answer. Again, in answer to the, the question by the Senator, this particular language was put out, out of the model, the Model of Partial Birth Abortion Act, and I will provide copies of the Model Act, which is, is in harmony with the federal ban in, in relation to, again, what was a key issue of omission of the health of the mother provision in the federal ban and in other state ban. And there's been a clear omission as a result of earlier interpretations of health, which could be psychological, could be depression. And, and what the clear delineation was that now it was, it was appropriate and constitutional to put, to, to take out that, that particular provision, but put in a provision, if necessary, for the, for the, the life endangerment and the endangerment of the life of the mother. Now, this is, was put out of the model legislation that I can get copies to you folks, and in fact, I'm having them make copies as well. That is more of a procedural process matter. So if we do, if you do note that if there is a partial birth abortion to be made in the island, if that is to occur, it would go through a, again, if it is determined that the life of the mother is endangered, if that abortion were to go, were to, to be, to occur, it would go through the medical board for examination. Now-
Is that before or after?
Afterwards. So obviously, this is after the fact. But now, that particular provision there states that there would be the consultation of two doctors in determining whether a partial birth abortion procedure was necessary. And you have a good question-
That, that is the issue, Madam Speaker, is that the federal statute does not have the consultation of two doctors. I'm trying to figure out who the referring doctor is and who the performing doctor is in, in this case. I've never had any children and don't plan on, and so I have no idea about OBs and what all that they do, but it would seem to me that it's, the, the same doctor does the same procedure. The, the one who would be, be determining that the mother's life is endangered by, by this pregnancy, who would be making the determination, would be the same one. But under this statute, the limitation that is provided, that is, is put in, in the proposed bill, has and requires two doctors to concur in, in, in the action and further providing that the two doctors not be from the same, from the, from the same clinic, because you can't have a financial relationship with the other doctor. And so I'm, I'm just concerned. Madam Speaker, I, I said I would support this bill, but I'm just saying it's going to be, it is going to go to the Supreme Court again. All right? It will be challenged, and I'm trying to make sure that we will have something that will stand muster with the Supreme Court this time. And I'm just concerned that the limitation that we placed in this bill is not the same limitation that the, that the U.S. Supreme Court in a five-four decision. A five-four decision, a very small margin, and I accept the decision of the majority. I can count five is greater than four, and I know that they have the majority and, and that is, that currently is the, the, the ruling in Gonzalez. So I accept it. And I'm willing to, though I don't think it's absolutely necessary for us to have a statute here locally, I will support a local statute, because I said I would support a local statute. But I want that local statute to, to survive scrutiny when it goes up. This bill has three ma, three major problems. One, the limitation that is placed in Section Four has additional limitations on it that is not addressed in the federal statute. And two, in the legislative intent, though the limitation was placed in the, the body of the, of the, of the proposed act, the legislative intent still contains two paragraphs which contradict the limitation that is, is put in the bill. These two paragraphs were in the original bill when there was no life endangering exception, but is still left in the, in the legislative intent. And when, when the local Supreme Court and the national Supreme Court reviews this bill, when it, when it is challenged, they're going to question why these two paragraphs are still in the legislative intent, which completely contradict the inclusion of the limitation in Section Four. And so the two paragraphs in, in the intent section, I'm hoping with the author's concurrence should be deleted, and that's the paragraph on page three, starting on line 15 and ending on 20, and on page five, starting on, on line 16 and ending on 22. And so I don't think it's necessary to include those two paragraphs in the legislative intent, because it clouds the true intent of this legislature, especially when on page 10 of the bill, you have the limitation, or the exception, as it were, the choice, I, I'm not, I don't know who, who drafted this, but it should be the exception, but limitation's fine as long as it's in there. But I still have grave concerns about the fact that it is, it is different from what the national standard that the U.S. Supreme Court addressed in Gonzalez, and it, Gonzalez. And it was very clear in the U.S. Supreme Court case that they didn't need to address that issue of constitutionality because the, the federal statute included that exception. And so I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that we can address this and make sure that we have a strong statute. I, I, I don't want everybody to be thinking that, that what we're doing here today is just to get through this without having done what we think is going to stand, stand the test in our local Supreme Court and stand the test in the, in the U.S. Supreme Court, unlike the first challenge that was made many years, many years ago with a, with a, with another local statute. So I, those are my, my two major issues with this legislation. Those, the two paragraphs need to go, in the legislative intent, need to be deleted. The limitation I can almost live with and let it be challenged in the U.S. Supreme, in, in the courts and see whether or not it survives scrutiny, and, and we'll see. But I'm just saying, I, I'm not happy with it, but I, I would prefer that if we're going to do it, that we mirror the, the federal statute that has, has already been, been, been tested and survived. But the two paragraphs in the intent really do need to go in order to, for this thing to survive, to at least not be contradictory within itself. And so I, I asked the authors if they would, would accede to having both of these, these paragraphs taken out. And Madam, Madam Speaker, I want one thing very clear. I do not support abortion, okay? I do not support abortion. And I'm not going to use this floor to do a personal testimony because in my own family, we have a child that we've taken in and she is the best thing that's ever happened to us. But my mother has decided she's not telling anybody, so I'm not about to do that myself publicly. But the thing is, is that I, I understand and it's, it's, it has been a blessing. So I'm not in favor of it. But Madam Speaker, I want to use this opportunity while I'm standing here and knowing that we are being seen by thousands of homes across the island, that you and I witnessed this last weekend the presentation of the National Adoption Day. And you heard the Chief Justice speak and say that there are 197 children in foster care on this island, 197. And the Chief Justice also told us that there is only 17, one seven, desischeti. There are only 17 foster families on this island. This, our community has to get together and assist Public Health and Social Services, provide more homes to these 197 children. Very simple math will tell you 17 into 197 means at least 10 children in each household, or the rest of them are sanctuary, or at least shelter. We've got to come out. I mean, I'm using this forum because, as I was telling Senator Carmen Casper Bauer earlier, when I was Family Court Judge, I, I went and I pled to the Catholic Daughters of America when they were meeting a government house. And I said, I do not support abortion and I want us to find homes for our children. I don't want them left. I, in fact, a young woman, when I was at the bank today, came up to me and she goes, you know, I was talking to my mother and the one thing she remembers about you is that you were driving into work one day and you saw children alongside of the road and you called the school because you couldn't understand why, that what they were doing there. I'm very concerned about our children, Madam Speaker, and it has been a major concern of my entire career. But 197 children with 19, with 17 foster homes? I was so happy yesterday when I went to Moleso and I ran into Ten Rifino and Ten Tongo, and I was teasing her that I didn't see her here for the foster care thing. And she goes, you know what? I just remembered, I, I need a letter of recommendation from you. Because she had been a foster parent for over 20 years, and only when her husband was ill did she discontinue being a foster parent. But she now is asking Public Health and Social Services and asking me for a letter of recommendation, because I saw how well she did, the wonderful things she did with the children that came through her home, how, how well she did with, with those children. She wants to be reconsidered again to be a foster parent. But I plead to this community, it is, it is embarrassing that there are only 17 foster homes on this island, and I will, I will bet you 10 to 1, because it was true during the 10 years that I was juvenile court judge, that the majority of those foster homes are not local. During my term, my term in the, as Family Court Judge, the majority of the foster homes were military families. So I support Bill 274 if we can get rid of these two paragraphs in the legislative intent, and I'll, I'll let the challenge go through on the limitation, the way that it's written, because there's at least a limitation that are, or an exception that is provided. But I plead to this community, let us please join together in providing homes for all of these children, because there is no reason why Public Health and Social Services should have 197 children under their care and only 17 homes in which to place them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Cruz. I'm going to go ahead and take a few minutes recess, because I would like for some of the questions then addressed with the primary authors. questions then addressed with the primary authors. If there isn't any objection to having Senator B.J. Cruz continue after the short deliberation with the authors to have him make a motion, an amendment. No objections ordered. Senator Cruz, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. After discussion with the authors on page five... Yeah, let me start with the easier one. On page five, rather than the entire paragraph, just delete the words, "is never medically indicated to preserve the health of the mother." And the paragraph will read, "Elessa Tuengwahen, for reasons, finds that partial birth abortion is in fact unrecognized as a valid abortion procedure by the mainstream medical community." That whole thing stays in. It's just that one line. Is there any objection to that?
Are there objections to the amendment? No objections ordered.
The other amendment that I'm proposing, Madam Speaker, is on page three. The paragraph lines 15 to 20 are very strong and I really don't think are necessary. And I'd move to strike the entire paragraph from 15 to 20.
On the motion then to delete lines 15 to 20 on page three. No objection? Yes, you want to make an amendment to the amendment?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I am not objecting to the amendment, but I would like to just amend it further. And could we just... My motion would be delete from line 15 to line 17, ending with exception. Would that be satisfactory with the author of the amendment?
Well, then you also have the problem with that very strong sentence in the next that it's never necessary to preserve the health of the woman. I just...
Understanding that this is legislative findings intent, I have no objection.
On the motion then, without objections ordered. On the list that I have to speak, I have Senator Respecho and then Speaker Ben Panglin. If there's anyone else, please let me know. Senator Respecho, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I had the opportunity to attend the public hearing on this bill. And I want to thank and acknowledge all the individuals who came out to testify in support of this bill 374 that we're addressing right now. My first opportunity I had to show my support on any legislation that would ban partial birth abortions was at the Meet the Candidates Forum at the Micronesian Mall. Someone came up to me, was a young man, and asked what my position was on this bill. And I said, "Certainly, I would not support this kind of procedure that is not only gruesome and horrific, but really just something that is totally unnecessary when the woman is in her trimester stage." And there was another group of women that were at the Micronesian Mall and further explained to me what the actual procedure is, Madam Speaker, and why some doctors choose to perform this kind of procedure in such a late stage of a fetus's development. It caused me a great pause and so almost traumatized me when they actually explained what that medical procedure is. I'm not going to go into that right now because, you know, this session is televised and if anybody wants to know what the exact procedure is, they can simply go online, do a search for partial birth abortions, and you can see graphics and a presentation made. One particular link that I call attention to is an email sent by Dr. Bennett Dunka to every single member of the legislature asking us what our position would be. So I was very clear that I would not support this kind of procedure. And at that hearing, there was a commitment from the Committee on Health and from the author that when this bill were to come out of committee, it would mirror the current federal statute so that this piece of legislation is not at all challenged. Sometimes when we have great zeal and ambition to right a wrong or to make sure a wrong no longer continues, if we're not careful enough by the exact legislation we pass, Madam Speaker, we could actually be doing more harm than good. And the bill that came out of the committee obviously needs a little bit more fine tuning as the Senator from PD pointed out. And the Chairman on Health is agreeing to make certain amendments that will not conflict with the current federal ban on partial birth abortion so that if this bill were to pass without any additional amendments, we could see that this bill would automatically be challenged in court. And if there was a stay to this law, then Guam may be the only jurisdiction that would allow for this practice. And we absolutely don't want to be a party to that. We want to make sure that any legislation we pass will not be in conflict with the federal statute. And we want to make sure that any legislation we pass could be immediately implemented. This is really not a pro-life or pro-choice issue, Madam Speaker. It's an issue of whether or not a community would accept a kind of procedure done so late in a fetus's development towards the third trimester. This is the issues to whether or not something like this should be tolerated by any community. And I'm standing up to say that it should not be. I'm also saying that the fact that the legislature committed to putting this bill on the top of this session agenda is a commitment from this body to prioritize this and all the other issues. We went as far as putting this bill on the top of second reading with a commitment that the report that would come out of the committee and the substituted version that would come out of the committee would mirror exactly the federal code. And now, because that's not the case, we're having to go back and make all these amendments. So to the listening audience and the people who are watching on TV, when you see all these amendments being made, it's not because it's an attempt to stifle the commitment that we have to making sure that there's truly a ban on partial birth abortions, but rather a commitment to making sure that the ban would apply to Guam and to our local statute and that we will not do anything to jeopardize it from being challenged in court. And before I close, I want to also recognize that former Senator Carmen Castlebauer, as a former legislator, does have privilege of the floor and she's been coming in and out from time to time. So I rise in full support of the bill with the amendments that need to be made. And I'm hoping that this could be a giant step forward to recognize just how much tolerance any community should have, beginning with the community on Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Respecho. Speaker Pangolinan?
Sisus maasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I also want to rise in support of 374 based upon the discussion at the public hearing and the cooperation that was shown by all parties involved in that to make sure that we do implement a ban on partial birth abortion that will stand the scrutiny of the U.S. Constitution and Supreme Court that determines the constitutionality of statutes. And it's, to me, it's important that we do this because we know that, one, we want to put something in place. And if we put something in place that goes contrary to that, then we continue to divide the community further rather than bringing the community together. And I think that at that hearing, we certainly saw the community come together. I've always been kind of targeted, not targeted, but I've always been approached by opponents of abortion with almost kind of like a trepidation that we don't want to talk to him because we know his position on the issue. And I've always been very open and receptive to hearing the issue. And it's unfortunate that the way we are governed, that there are these three separate branches of government sometimes. It's unfortunate that the one overall policy that one branch wants to impose on a community gets interpreted by another branch to comply with the third branch and so forth. So it's hard to fashion something that all branches can agree upon. And I think at that hearing, I certainly pledged my commitment to Bill 374 so that what was agreed upon there will bring this community together and it stand against partial birth abortion. While we know that we are... There is a prohibition even without the enactment of local statute, the conversations I've had with individuals proposing and advocating for the enactment of local statute was that was important that we do so. And I certainly agree with them. I certainly agree that the enactment of local statute, putting it in our books, is a statement to this community and to the world, frankly, of our stand against prohibiting this practice with regards to as part of the normal processes and laws that occur and our statement that we will not tolerate this kind of practice here on Guam. And I support that. I think it's very important that we do enact what was agreed upon at that hearing that will ensure that the law's not challenged because we don't want the divisiveness to occur. And we already know that if there is an opportunity, that those that are going to advocate for a woman's right to choose without this allowance for the... For this function or for this process without its allowance when it endangers the life of a mother, not the health now, when it's the... Endangers the life of a mother, without that carve-out you might want to see, you might want to say, we will have a challenge to the law that will further divide the community and delay the implementation of the banning of this pursuant to our own local statutes and not just relying on the federal statute. So based on the discussions and the agreements that have been forged, I certainly stand in support of Bill 374 with the proposed amendments that will move us forward and leave this kind of practice behind us and making an affirmative statement that it is not acceptable and will not be tolerated by our community. And I thank every and each and every single person involved in this process for seeing that common values here with regards to affirmatively acting and enacting statutes that will leave this practice, you know, behind us and not take it with us as we move forward in our community on building greater consensus for what we value in our community and so forth. And so I want to thank all the parties involved, my colleagues, as well as everyone that's testified and everyone that's advocated for this position because we truly have some common ground here. And I think that this will be something that the entire community will support and making that, I can't emphasize enough, that affirmative statement of the fact that as a community, we will not tolerate this practice. So thank you. And sisus maasi, Madam Speaker, and I look forward to casting an affirmative vote on this.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Ben. Senator Frank Blas Jr.?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, Madam Speaker. Last week, I met with a relative who was proud to show me the ultrasound photos of the child that she was bearing. She and I had some discussion as to whether or not the child was a boy or girl. You know, the ultrasound photo, because of the technological advances, this was a 4D type photo. And the argument, funny as it is, as it was at the time, is it was just of the face of the child. And I argued it was a boy, she argued it was a girl. I said, how you know it's a girl? She goes, that's what they told me. And I said, uh, it looks like a boy. You know, Madam Speaker, I bring that up because this child hasn't even been born yet. Child hasn't left the mother's womb. And already, medical, the advances in medical technology today allow us to have these type of discussions. At the same token, on the other hand, there still remains the discussion as to whether or not the killing of that being is permissible. I want to stand right here and I'll tell you right from the get-go. I'm not... I'm not for any type of abortion, whether it be partial, whether it be any other type. I'm a person that believes that an individual is started, a life is started upon conception. Anything after that is murder. And, you know, as we're sitting here and discussing and deliberating this bill, and I tell you what, Madam Speaker, I'm very encouraged at all the discussions because I think, and I firmly believe that is the sentiment of this body, that we want to make a strong statement. I'm sure that there are some of us in here that want to make stronger statements. But has, but as has been articulated by previous speakers, we've got to make sure that what we pass in this body can stand or has been tested to be able to stand and to hold true. And I recognize this and I understand, let's start to take the little steps. Let's start to take the positive steps. And in working with this, and I want to thank again all my colleagues for recognizing and understanding that we want to make sure that when this legislation leaves this body, when it finally becomes law, that it has passed, it has withstood the litmus test within the Supreme Court. It's very difficult, if any, for a successful challenge, but it helps to start, it helps to move us forward in recognizing that this type of activity will not be tolerated by our island. And in recognition of this, you know, and as a result of the discussions that we have amongst our body here, so that we mirror as best we can the legislation or the bill or the law that has already passed that litmus test, that has already stood the test within the judicial system. I propose the amendment that's before us now with regards to, first off, adding to Section 91A 104 in prohibition, after the last line there, that it reads, "This subsection does not apply to partial birth abortion that is necessary to save the life of a mother whose life is endangered by a physical disorder, physical illness, or other physical injury including a life-endangering physical condition caused by or arising from the pregnancy itself." And also then thereby also deleting Section 4 of the bill. Again, Madam Speaker, it is with a heavy heart that we have to address it in this fashion, but I recognize, I recognize that because of the way it has been passed and because of the tests that it has already gone through in the Supreme Court, that we, in discussions with our colleagues, my colleagues, we feel that this is necessary so that our legislation too, the legislation that we are deliberating on now, can pass that same test and can make that affirmative and that statement, you know, with regards to partial birth abortion. I don't like abortion, man. I wish we can get a little bit more stringent in this thing. But I recognize too that we got to start, we'll take our baby steps, we'll move forward. Baby steps. It's amazing how we can use that now. So with that, I may proffer that amendment.
Are there any objections to the Blas amendment? There being objections ordered. Senator Guthurts?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You know, the subject of this bill goes beyond race, ethnicity, country, or religion. To me, really, the subject is of our humanity as human beings and how we treat each other. And I think that this bill is very, very important for our island and all of our people because it makes a statement, a strong statement about what is not acceptable on this particular subject. And I'm comfortable with the bill, with the amendments that have been offered because we certainly do not want to end up challenged before the Supreme Court of the United States. That won't get us anywhere. I do think that the subject of the bill does require an education program as well. Because I frankly believe that not enough education by nonprofit organizations and other groups has been done to try to inform particularly our young people about the ramifications of some of the things that have happened in our community. I think this bill is a very good beginning, as Senator Blas says, and I would hope that it will be interpreted the way it is written and justly applied. And I ask everyone in our community to look at this bill, should and when it becomes law, as a very strong statement about what we as human beings stand for and what is really very important in our lives. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Senator Guthurts. Senator Palacios?
Sisus maasi, no, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, to mutha gudzulokui poguna ora kumo obaybu ta hngan este Bill 374. Segun gi office tam ma presenta, muchimas, ma presenta gi sipresentasyon Senator Ben Pangolinan dan Senator B.J. Cruz. Magahin na, olarun mo'unsa sina tabana kumpitli na este abortion. Magahin na, ohanora mohon za sina tabana kompily na este abortion. Logai gi na, estasi ma tsa gi ma presenta za ma debate gi mastat chilo na justicia nae gi United States Supreme Court liknia za ma decide na inana ni fumafana ifina ta nyagi oran, gi ma pugia na ni parawa complication. Ilai na Supreme Court na esti na naon na gua di ri chun na, na pro adzik ko po maut e pa' po la'la segun gi zangin, hofa nu nisisi, nisisita u ma kurii hi complication. No, segun gi eno nen na recognition by the United States Supreme Court. Esti na amendment ni ma pegan esti ma adapt, ga'gi na ana'zi balansa kabalis za very, manpo si esti strict na exception, no infine tiaku kontra nae i decisioni Supreme Court. Za go lileku na bujdi sa amendment nae zangin tabuta pa' gos za go baybu ta hungan. Manofan esti sempri pa' gona a'ni, esti mismu timpo zangin manofan si esti za ma adapt. Estaha lokei dangkulu esti na abansa para etanu ta Guam. Sa, gi magahin tiu obrigao na para tanaguha esti Bill 74, no inajeta na para tanaguha nae, no mismu timpo, ta na siguru na a'hi ti, ti, tiu ginatsa ni moni za ma decide ni Supreme Court. Za segun gi amendment ili lina na hungan kabalis, ga'gi na adispetai zu za a'hi tiu, tiu akontra za ni moni za ma decide nae. Ohanora mohon za pokus mo na timpu, gi manamala na timpu, u gua hamo se jirikne conservative Supreme Court. Za sina ta'nu ma, ma aminda za mana most strict, no mismu timpu in the meantime, ma niza taksepa moni za ga'gi me establish. Ah, agi, ah, ta'nu estaha esti dangkulu na abansu zangin tapausa pa' gos ti Bill 74. Za sempri ga'gi buturu na besa potas ti Bill 74. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Senator Lohan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill 374. I will stand up and say that I, I am guided in this vote by, not just because we're human beings, but I'm guided by my faith and how I was brought up. You know, before we start a recession, we start our session with prayer. We don't pray to the Supreme Court. We pray to the, our supreme, our God, not to the Supreme Court. And so with that, I don't think there's any member in this body that does not have their conscience and guided by their conscience. And although we move with, as Senator earlier, baby steps to correct flawed bills because when they go before the Supreme Court, that they may be ruled down. At times when we're taking baby steps, we have to also take bold steps, Madam Speaker. Bold steps to what is right as human beings and as God-fearing people as well, Madam Speaker. And I ask my colleagues that, I will be here in this legislature to vote on this, and I'm glad I am, but in future legislatures, on the 30th, when other bills come up in regards to, to, you know, abortion is a word that is given and, you know, when a flight is aborted, it's no longer a flight, this is murder. It's a, I guess, the best word that they can find for a murder of a, of a person that cannot speak or act for themselves. And so I, again, you know, if, if other bills come up and hits the floor in regards to the murdering or injuring of a, of a child in any way, that they would act in a positive manner and remember again that before you start any session, that you pray. We have all prayed ever since the 27th I've been here, we've always prayed to our supreme, our God. We don't pray to our Guam Supreme Court, we don't pray to our US Supreme Court, we pray to the supreme being, our maker. And so with that, Madam Speaker, again, I have my stories to tell, but I've already told them. I can live with that and, and, but I also want to say that, that this, this bill is a, a great first step in clarifying the injustices. The unfortunate thing is that, again, we have human beings deciding the fate of other human beings, whether they live or die, and/or they're held accountable to, to the death of other human beings. I have a point of, I guess, clarification to the author. In Section 91A 106, Page 7, under criminal penalties, obviously after all the adjudication has been done, this is the penalty phase where it says, "Any person who intentionally or knowingly violates this act is guilty of a third degree felony after the adjudication process." And then B says, "Any physician who intentionally or knowingly performs a partial birth abortion and thereby kills, kills a human fetus shall be fined not less than $10,000, no more, no more than $100,000 under this title, or imprisoned for not less than one year or not more than 10 years or both." I mean, and I agree with this, I think it'd be a lot stricter than this, a little more intense than this, but, and I asked legal counsel with this, but I'm asking, I said, this, this physician that kills after being in prison and fined can come out and still continue to kill again? Continue to practice? I mean, I, I don't know if there's, if there's statute or rules and regs under, under the medical licensing board that, that a felony or a conviction or imprisonment is, is causes for the revocation of, of medical licenses, but again, on the penalty phase that here that they, I guess, can still go out and is up, is up to the board whether they, whether they, whether they are still licensed to, to practice.
Would you like the author to respond?
Yes, please, please.
Would the author yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I will yield to the question. The, this is something that, again, we, in the penalty phase, there are, again, criminal penalties and it is a felony. I would assume, and this is where I may need to have verification from legal counsel, but when it comes to, to certification licensure in, 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 in the medical profession, that, that being found guilty of a felony may warrant a, a rejection of, and a repeal of the license. But if I could take maybe a, a minute to check on that, if we could take a brief recess and I can, I can verify and get some answers. But at this point, I don't have an answer and I, I would like to get clarification.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So we could call for a minute recess and we could look into, to that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
The legislature is back in session.
Thank you very much.
Senator Kau, will you want to respond to the question?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Again, we've done some research into the current statutes in regards to the early inquiry made by Senator Luhon. Again, in Observation of Ten GCA, Chapter 12, 1209, Part 1, Article 2, and the Physicians' Practice Act, there is, again, authorization given to, again, the Board of Medical Examiners for disciplinary action, but it leaves much of the direction to the medical examiners for any type of disciplinary action to be taken in regards to, let's say, a misdemeanor or felony committed by a physician. So there is really no direct or strong language indicative in current statute as to what type of penalty will be imposed, such as revocation of license. I hope this would help the senator.
Thank you. Was he able to answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And that's why I probed up this amendment, basically. And basically, in the public hearing, we heard the doctor testify in the fact, in the sense that no way, shape, or form is the partial birth abortion ever needed. And so, in that, and again, authorizes the medical board to do whatever they want. They don't have to revoke the license. So, again, in concert with the criminal penalties in regards to the no less than $10,000, no more than $100,000, no less than a year, no more than 10 years, or both, I have an amendment that has been passed out, and that would be on Page 8, Section 91A108, review of the Guam Medical Examiners Board, and it'd be a new section, 91A108, new section, subsection C, that would read, "A defendant convicted of an offense under this act shall have his medical license revoked by the Guam Board of Medical Examiners." That was it.
On the motion, are there any discussions? So on the motion, then, are there any objections? There being none, the motion carries. Senator Shimizu, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and an interesting time, because I understand that you have to leave earlier. And it's the desire of this body to vote on this bill, and to have you be able to sit. As I will refrain from laying my foundation, traditional foundation upon which my remarks will be based, but suffice it to say--
I thank you.
Suffice it to say that I want to commend the author. This is a bill that has been long overdue. I have always been taking this position similar to this. In fact, 13 years ago, I stood up and I spoke alone with my other colleagues, Senator Pilar Luhon, Senator Bell Areola, Senator Durking, when we spoke out very vocally about this issue. And as history shows, we were not reelected, because the forces of pro-choice were also there and were much stronger. I'm very happy. I'm very happy that we have this bill that would prohibit this method of abortion, simply because it, not only the brutality that is involved in the procedure. You know, snuffing any life, taking a life, no matter how humanitarian this is, still in violation, in my own personal belief, of the Fifth Commandment of the Ten Commandments, which basically say, "Thou shalt not kill." I believe that upon a life exists upon conception, and that that life is the seed of life and has its own genetic personality, it has its own spirit, it has its own soul. So, Madam Speaker, it stands to reason that this, the unborn child, child of God, child of man and woman, is to be protected by the laws of man in our country. It's called the Constitution of the United States. But that has not been necessarily true. In fact, this legislation had to muster the Supreme Court decision to say that this is allowable under the Constitution, man-made laws. But there is a greater law than man-made constitution, and that is the laws of our supreme being, who gave us the Ten Commandments, and the Fifth Commandment says, "Thou shalt not kill." Thank you, Madam.
Can you cover for me?
Speaker, one part you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I feel very strongly about what this bill actually talks about and what the effects are as a result of the actions that we're going to take here. And I don't want to belabor this, but there are three things that I feel very strongly about, and as an educator, this is something that I've always addressed and hold very dearly. One of the things that, and I know this is something that maybe no one would ever want to really hear us talk about in a session hall, and more importantly, in a government function, but I think one of the things that's very important, and this is my appeal to all of the churches, all of the different religions, that they need to take a greater role with families. It used to be, I remember the day, growing up, the church basically was involved in the family in almost all aspects, and as a result of that, we saw basically what our community was like, based on that, on our faith. And we're guided by, not just our faith, but our values, we're guided also by our culture. And I think the church needs to come around and become a little bit stronger and more influential in what actually happens, not just in the home, but more importantly, especially beyond even sometimes what happens there. And people may not agree with me, but that's my personal feelings. The other is education. And I'm not just talking about the partial birth part, it's just going back again to the discussion we had earlier, that education is very important. We need to educate our children about, you know, the causes that they're putting in, and then ultimately what those results would be. And then the third is support. Senator B.J. Cruz spoke of it so eloquently, and yes, he was right. Yesterday, we had presented a resolution and honored those foster homes, families who provide care for these children that maybe the parents are unable to care for, or even some of the parents who may have abandoned some of these children. So this support is very important to have as the third prong in this whole discussion. The support would be not just for the mother, but more importantly, for the child. And we need to go back to that old African proverb, that we say that it would take a village, a whole village, to raise a single child. And having said that, then, I like to actually pose some questions, and not saying that anyone should answer these questions, or for me even to answer it here publicly, or anyone for my colleagues to respond to, but for everyone to really stop and think about. We say that, and you had stated that earlier, is that there is that, you know, law that is supreme, but there's also another law of the universe, and that is the law of causality. So the questions are, how do our actions affect others? Do we consider what effect our actions will have, not only in the near future, but also for our children and for future generations? So the law of causality generally then says that the actions that we take would definitely give rise to situations, circumstances, and other phenomena in the near future. And when you think about now the law of causality, is that there would be a bad cause that one would put in, and ultimately, a good effect, I mean, a bad cause, effect will be the result. You put in a good cause, and then you ultimately get a good effect. The outcome would be a good effect. So when you really stop and think about it, and that in this legislation that we're saying, it's a good thing, it's a good cause that we're putting in to help, hopefully, not just the young mothers, not just the children, not just the society who would be responding to this, and then not just the medical profession as well. So these are definitely good causes in which we're able, in such a simple legislation, to help effectuate as a society, some good causes, some good things that we want to be put in, and then ultimately, as a result of that, then the good effect will be, is that then we would be better educated, we would be strong in our faith, in our culture, and our values, and then as a result of that, we also ultimately have truly a really good society to live in. And what we do today would determine exactly what our society would look like in the future. So thank you, Mr. Speaker. And by the way, I didn't say it earlier, and based on my discussion, yes, I do support as well Bill 374. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? If not, we will have the author of the bill. Senator Kau, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and Madam Speaker. First of all, I want to thank so much my colleagues for the support they've given in the movement of Bill 374, and there has been, again, a bipartisan effort and assistance given by members of both majority and the minority to ensuring that, in the spirit of this bill, that the spirit is indeed within the text in legal form, so that it can pass a muster of not only local courts, but also our federal court system and the Supreme Court. My colleagues, and as I mentioned earlier, the bill that we have been discussing today, it's not a partisan issue, as evidenced by the universal support given to this bill by my colleagues. All of us, as I look at the members of this body, have lived in Guam, and living in a small community, and the sense that we have as a community of oneness, and the strong ties of our families that bring this community together, that we can unite in certain issues that may be in other communities in the United States, may be more polarizing, such as the issue of abortion. Madam Speaker, I want to thank you also for the discussion you had mentioning about causality, and the actions that we all do, and whether we do it here as positions in the legislature, and our roles as public servants, or what we do in our everyday life. They have an effect that is like a pebble you drop in the pool, and it causes a wave, and has effects that we cannot think of. But if it is a positive act, positive movement occurs, and if it is negative, otherwise occurs. This particular piece of legislation, and others in which I will be attempting to move forward in the remainder of the 29th Guam Legislature and the 30th Guam Legislature, will focus on some of the positive issues that this legislature has moved forward. I'm very, I know we're still one session short of our last session, but it's been an honor to work with my colleagues here. We've had our fights, but when it came down to pieces of legislation that dealt with a common good, again, we've been in a recession for over 10, for about 10 years, and we've had dwindling resources to work with. And within that period, what little monies that we have appropriated have gone to areas such as education, health, and public safety, and they've gone into areas, just recently, again, in bond moves, whether we put money for education to repair the schools, or we put money for those that are less fortunate, such as an MIP, for our economically indigent, and also monies put forward for our disabled, and dealing with some of the court legal action to ensure that are less fortunate, and whether it's economic limitations, whether it's limitations on age, or limitations on disabilities, this legislature, and I'm sure the next legislature, will continue in that tradition and focusing on those that are most in need in this community. And what better way to end these last two months of this legislative session than deal with those issues of our most defenseless segments of this community, which are the unborn? And I think this particular piece of legislation is one step, and I know we need to move further in other steps. This community, this island, and this legislature has shown a willingness to focus on legislation that deals with what is for life. I don't recall too much pieces of legislation that has come through this legislature to tear things down, but more to build things up. And this particular piece of legislation, this legislature, and by the way, Madam Speaker, I'm going to close this, because I know you're not feeling well, and I want to thank you, because it was your comments made, but this is for life, and this is something about our community, our people of Guam. We're a community that treasures life, no matter what segment of you are the community you're in. And I want to thank my colleagues in their universal support of Bill 374. I want to thank you for your support for life, and I look forward to your continued support in other measures in the future. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Kau. Senator Respecho, what happened? Where can, one minute recess, we'll get Senator Respecho into the hall.
Where can, one minute recess, we'll get Senator Respecho into the hall. All right. So Senator Pangolinan, then, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to, notwithstanding the House rules, move back to motions for the purpose of placing Bill 374 as amended into the third reading file, and then voting on the bill today, and then returning back to the top of the second reading file.
So on the motion, then, to go back to motions, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. We're announced on motions.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move, notwithstanding the House rules, that we place Bill 374 in the third reading file, and we proceed directly to the third reading file, to vote on Bill 374 as amended without engrossment. Is that...
I understand that it's engrossed.
Oh, it's engrossed, and then it'll be, okay. So to vote on Bill 374 today.
So on the motion, then, to place Bill 374 on the voting file, no objection?
No objection.
So ordered. We'll take a minute recess while copies are sent to everyone. The legislature is back in session. We are now in the voting file, and we have Bill 374 that's engrossed. I would like to ask the clerk to please read the bill.
Bill number 374 EC is substituted by the author and amended on the floor, introduced by Edward J.B. Cavill, Frank F. Blas Jr., James V. Spaldan, and all others. An act to add a new chapter 91A to Division 4 of Title X of the Guam Code annotated relative to partial birth abortion, amend section 3218 of Chapter 3, Division 1 of Title X of the Guam Code annotated, and to cite the Act as the Partial Birth Abortion Ban Act of 2008.
Roll call.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cavill.
Aye.
Senator Cruz.
Aye.
Speaker Forbes. Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Shizaki.
Yes.
Senator Luhon.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
O'Ginn.
Senator Palacios.
O'Ginn.
Speaker Pangolinan.
O'Ginn.
Senator Respecho.
O'Ginn.
Senator Shimisou.
O'Ginn.
Senator Tenorio.
Yes.
Speaker Wampa.
Substitute Bill 374 EC received 13 ayes, two excused absences. Substitute Bill 374 is duly passed. We are now back to second reading. Senator Respecho.
Can I make a motion to go back to...
Senator Respecho, then.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Now, with saying the House rules, can we quickly go to motions for purposes of correcting our resolution number that I placed on the agenda earlier?
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Resolution 140 should actually be Resolution 199. Resolution 140 already passed in a previous session.
Okay, so it's 199?
Yes.
Okay, so please make that correction. No objection to that?
And I also move to place Resolution 196 also by Senator Guthers at the bottom of the second reading file.
On the motion, any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you. And I would say, in the House rules, I move that we revert back to the second reading file.
Okay, on that motion, without objections, so ordered. We're back in the second reading. On the list, we have Bill number 272. The author of Bill 272. Senator Guthers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And good morning, colleagues. Or good afternoon, colleagues, sorry. Each of you should have a copy of the committee report for Bill number 272, and I would like to thank our speaker for preparing the committee report and getting it distributed for all of us today. Bill 272, it was passed out earlier. Madam Chair, I move to accept Bill 272 for purposes of discussion.
As amended?
As amended. As substituted by the committee. As substituted by the committee on education and omnibus affairs.
Okay, Senator Guthers, proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, you have a copy of the committee report, which contains a substituted bill recommended by the committee. The title of the bill is "An Act to Amend the Election Code to Provide for the Presentation of Initiative Measures and to Add Section 17201 and 17202.2 of Chapter 17 of Title III Guam Code Annotated." Basically, Mr. Speaker, this bill intends to clarify the initiative process within the island of Guam, and to reaffirm certain perspectives regarding the initiative process. As you know, we have gone through a number of initiatives with similar subjects now for, I think, the past three or four elections, and each point during that process, the people of Guam voted no on certain initiatives. We have been repeatedly approached by the community, asking us to please do something to clarify exactly how this process should work, believing that when the people say no, they shouldn't have to say no repeatedly, over and over again, on the same subject. Now, in the substitute bill, and by the way, I'm going to make an amendment to the substitute bill that came from the committee, in the substitute bill, you have two provisions. You have Section 2, 17202.1 of Chapter 17, a new section, 17202.1 of Chapter 17 of Title III of the Guam Code Annotated. And you also have Section 3... And you also have Section 3, a new section, 17202.2 of Chapter 17 of Title III Guam Code annotated. And I would like to move, Mr. Speaker, simply to delete the first section, which is Section 2, a new 17202.1 from the substitute bill, and to renumber the Section 3 as Section 2 and as 17202.1. In other words, we would include lines 20 to 23 and delete lines 50 to 19 on page 2. So that would be the motion.
Okay, there's a motion here on page 2. Senator Guthers is deleting Section 2 in its entirety, and that's from line 15 to 19, and to renumber Section 3 to be now Section 2. Are there any objections to the... Senator Cruz, you recognize?
Thank you very much. Point of information, Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering why the good author is removing it. As co-sponsor, I don't have any problem with the five-year requirement. Between them, I have before me the Wyoming statute, which states an initiative petition may be filed at any time except that one may not be filed for a measure substantially the same as that defeated by initiative within the preceding five years.
Senator Cruz, may I just interject, since you're a co-sponsor? Do you want to take a one-minute recess and do a sidebar counsel?
Fine, I will withdraw my amendment and leave it as it is.
As is, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Can you... Do you speak on your bill?
Yes, thank you. Therefore, I ask my colleagues to simply support the substitute bill as written, so that we can move forward and assure our people that we are sensitive to the concerns that have been brought up to us over and over again, and that we recognize the validity of their concerns. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. Are there any objections? Senator Cavill, you recognize?
Mr. Speaker, I think the... My issue here on the...
Excuse me, Senator Cavill, my apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't see that Senator Speaker had recognized. Senator B.J. Cruz?
That's fine.
Okay, Senator Cavill, proceed. Thank you, Senator Cruz.
The way this is written, and again, looking at Section 2, "An initiative measure is not approved by voters in any general election or special election. No initiative measure proposing a similar or related subject shall be submitted to voters for at least five years after the date of such election." I read that particular provision there, where it sets, again, a five-year requirement. Then you have the next section, Section 3. And in Section 3, and this is where there's been an addition, "An initiative measure can only be placed on an island-wide general election other than a primary election in which the election of the governor and lieutenant governor is on the ballot." And again, on a general election for the governor, lieutenant governor, that falls within a four-year period. So my interpretation of the construction of this is that if an initiative fails within a gubernatorial election, and since there's a five-year minimum requirement for the next one, then you're, in essence, you're looking at an eight-year... An eight-year period between... And again, I'm looking at from my simple layman's approach here, but it looks like there's an eight-year difference between if an initiative fails and if there's an attempt to make another initiative afterwards. And eight years, I understand that, and I realize what the spirit of this is about overly onerous initiatives coming out when the people have already spoken, but eight years in democracy, that's quite some time. And, you know, you think about it, every day, there's a new 18-year-old that is, that, you know, again, has that right to vote. And the way I look at it, every day, every month, every year, there's tens, there's hundreds of thousands of new voters that have a stake in this community. The current language of this provision would mean that if they're in an initiative process, which is direct democracy, I think the only time that they've had direct democracy in totality was in ancient Greece. But again, it was how many were considered citizens. We are a representative democracy, and with that representative democracy, the closest link we have to a direct democracy is the initiative process. And I just want to caution the authors of this particular bill. I'm not going to object to the two new amendments, I mean, to the... I'm not going to make an amendment, but my concern here is, is that what the intention is? Is the intention to expand the parameters of this initiative for eight years? That is a long time. And my colleagues, with that, I have objections to this bill. And I'm just concerned that I understand the issues that have hit this island, in particular to the gambling initiative. There are other folks that have pushed forward for other initiatives, such as the raising of the drinking age to 21, from 18 to 21. There may have been some other initiatives in the past, but, you know, if this thing goes as is and is passed, you're looking at eight years for an initiative to be raised. And my opinion is, there's a lot of people that are going to not only become 18 years of age between, in an eight-year period, but there's going to be a lot of people that could have voted but may have passed on in that eight-year period and not given the opportunity to move on initiative. So again, I have some misgivings on this particular bill, and maybe if we could look towards finding something that would be, would follow the spirit of the bill, but at the same time, understanding that we are a democracy and we have to allow our people that process of direct democracy in the initiative process. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Cavill. Senator B.J. Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 272, as substituted by the committee. I just wanted to advise my colleagues that I do have with me copies of the state laws that show that there are some limitations, and also to advise the membership that of the 50 states, only 24 allow for initiative process anyway. It's not something that is provided for in all 50 states. It's only 24 states provide it. And I think that we're actually ahead of 26 others in providing for it, but there is nothing wrong with us limiting the number of, a number of times an issue or the frequency with which an issue can come before the electorate. The five-year provision is not unheard of. As I mentioned, I have a copy of the Wyoming State statute that has a prohibition of it coming back up if it has been defeated within the preceding five years. And there are numerous other states that have prohibitions of two and three years. I have copies of the statute from Pennsylvania, which, oh, also has a five-year one. Pennsylvania Initiative statute, "Initiative on assembly questions shall not be submitted more often than once in five years." The Mississippi one is once in two, and the Utah also has a two-year prohibition. Oklahoma has it more than once in three years. Nebraska, once in three years. Massachusetts has it either of the two immediately precede, substantially the same petition cannot appear on the ballot after the two immediately preceding biennial state elections. So there's a four. So it's not unusual to have a restriction on the number of times or a limitation on the number of times that it can come up. And so I rise in support of the bill and hope for the support of all the colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Palacios, consigui.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I review this bill, and I look beyond the gaming initiative. In fact, the initiative process is actually a democratic process that allows people to, I guess, adopt a law if this government, if these elected officials, I guess, are not moving fast enough to their liking. Nevertheless, I look at, for example, the Coalition 21 movement, the Mothers Against Drunk Driving movement, that, I guess, a long time proposed to raise the drinking age, they failed. If this bill passes as it is written, of course, it will effectively delay again any more time. It will put those kind of initiatives, the same with the gaming initiative and any other initiative. I look at the initiative process as, like I said, how one makes of it and how one uses it. It can work for the people of Guam or against the people of Guam. I admit that the gaming initiative has been presented to this community more than we need to consider it. I admit that. But on the other hand, it's going to have a profound effect on other initiatives, I guess in particular, those who are still active in their effort to raise the drinking age. Not that I'm supporting that movement, I have my own personal feeling about that. But that is my concern about this bill. Also, as I noted earlier by Senator Von Peedy, is that those, for example, that are 17 and a half years old, or maybe one day before 18 on election day, if an initiative failed, that that means those people will not be able to vote until they become, what, 21, 22 years old, 23, 22 years old? And there will be many, many 16 and 17 years old and even 15 years old, who will be 18 years old three years later after the election. That's my concern, and of course, those people will not be able to consider and exercise their right to vote through the initiative process by virtue of a law, a local law that will prohibit or restrict the reintroduction of the same initiative. Again, another concern with this is, and again, I tend to agree with the Speaker, the colleague from MINT, is that Section 2 actually says that no initiative can be brought back for reconsideration until the fifth year, after five years. But then on Section 3, initiative provides that initiative can only be considered on the general election. And so of course, let's say 2010, an initiative is defeated, that means that the next general election will be 2014, but that is fourth year after that defeat in 2010, whatever is the initiative. So that would overlap into the next general election, which would be, I think, the next general election will be 2018. And so we're talking here about many, many, many years by the time an initiative would come back. I think that the people of Guam are, I guess, cautious enough or knowledgeable enough and mature enough to be able to decide, even on a year-by-year basis, when is the right time to adopt an initiative. I myself, I would like to exercise that right as the issue become before us. There are many factors that can develop, that can come about, one year or two years after a certain issue has gone through us. And it is the element that restricts the exercise of a democratic choice of rule or regulation that concerns me. And I, again, it is in that context that I, it's very difficult for me to support this bill as it is right now, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Palacios.
Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of what we're trying to achieve here, but I'm not sure I rise and supported the bill as in its present form. The concept, of course, was to limit this so that we don't get, continually get barraged by these initiatives for the same subject matter. And consistent with how initiatives are handled in other jurisdictions, it's very clear that the legislative body has the authority to limit how often they can come back and how soon. I had, one of the things I wanted to ensure is that when we have an initiative, that we get the maximum number of people out to vote on that initiative, or at least give them the opportunity to vote on the initiative, because they can always choose not to vote. And historically, we have seen that in our elections, the highest voter turnout always occur in a gubernatorial election year. And since there is a desire by the body, the electorate, the community, to limit how often these come back, and that two years or even eight months, I guess, maybe in some instances, is just too soon, and continues to be divisive to the community in general, that putting a greater length of time in between when you can do it would be beneficial to the community. And then it gives, believe it or not, the opportunity for proponents and opponents to kind of get a feel for where their positions have finally fall. In other words, we will know if, for example, Prop A, and the, in this case, is going to, would have helped tourism or would not have helped tourism, or whether or not we have seen that other improvements in the community will make up for the job offers that's being, for the job creation that's being touted by Prop A and so forth. And the public can see kind of how those positions bear out over a greater length of time and then make a better judgment and so forth. So I had suggested that in order to ensure that we have the greatest participation possible, that we make it in a gubernatorial year. However, the way, I thought that the bill would have been amended to substitute the gubernatorial year time limitation for the five-year time limitation. And I think we were trying to resolve this Prop A of making sure it doesn't come back in 2010, within two years, if we made it a gubernatorial year, because it just had its, you know, election this year, so it won't be subject to the five-year. It'll come back in two, because we have a gubernatorial election in 2010. And that's just the timing of the matter. And if we wanted to, we could specifically say that with the exception of the gambling initiatives fashioned in such a manner, it shall not be eligible for a gubernatorial initiatives fashioned in such a manner, it shall not be eligible for a gubernatorial or for a Prop A, for an initiative placement on the ballot in 2010 until the next gubernatorial year. And then every other initiative is, that comes forward would be on that four-year period. But I agree with the, with the way that the cycles here would work, is that if we do in fact say it's got to be five years, if we had an initiative in 2010, then, and it fails, then the next gubernatorial is in 2014, which means that initiative cannot come back until 2015. But there is no gubernatorial election year in 2015, and the next one would be in 2018. So it would have to wait for that eight-year cycle. And I don't think that, that definitely to me is a little bit onerous with regards to the restriction on the ability of the electorate to petition the government through the initiative process. So unless somebody kind of convinces me that the way that we've looked at this and those time cycles and election cycles are in fact incorrect, then I think that the way the bill is drafted presents a big problem for me because I would not support the restrictions on initiatives to eight years. I think, or, so I think that's just a little bit too long for me, but I'm willing to go with the four-year cycle in a gubernatorial year. And I would, I would, to me, that's even more important that we limit the initiatives to a general election than the five-year period, than a gubernatorial year election, than the five-year period. I think that, to me, that makes the achievement of trying to maximize the voter participation much more important to me, and the fact that gubernatorial years draw those voters out to the polls where they have the opportunity to vote on these initiatives. So again, once again, I, maybe the, given that, if I could ask the body to reconsider its position, and I would like to move that, again, Section Two be deleted and restrict the initiatives to four-year cycles in a gubernatorial general election rather. So I just would like to make that motion and would like to hear the body's position on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Pangolino. So you offered an amendment to delete it as originally proposed by, is there any objection to Senator Pangolino? Senator Nor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I appreciate the sentiments. As a matter of fact, those are some of the concerns I was going to bring up when my turn to speak was coming, but this is clearly one of the more important ones. We don't want to have an extended exaggerated period of time by which the voters can decide the policies of our island through an initiative process. But I also have some concerns, and I'm not objecting to it because I think that, you know, there's some merit in it, but if an initiative were to occur or someone wanted to push an initiative, should they be required to wait for the gubernatorial election cycle? Let me give you the hypothetical. Legislature raises taxes. The taxes are perceived to be overly burdensome by their population. The electorate, through the referendum or the initiative process, wants to pursue the rollback of those taxes. And in doing so, they find out, well, you can't do it because you have to wait until a gubernatorial election. So let's say, for example, the, not this 30th legislature incoming, but the 31st legislature decides that it wants to institute taxes. In that particular legislative cycle, the next election, which is not a gubernatorial election in 2012, they will not have the opportunity to roll back the taxes. They have to wait for another two years before they're given the opportunity to, in fact, roll back taxes, that they don't feel are appropriate or that are warranted or justified. And so, again, referencing my earlier comments about not objecting to this, I kind of have to object to it because I think that there's a fundamental democratic process here, which is very much crucial, in my view, and it was in the makers of our Organic Act, which is our constitution, gives the right for the initiative to be brought so the policies can be moved by the people rather than their representatives. And by virtue of taking away this ability to have an initiative in a non-gubernatorial election sequel, sequence or election cycle, you're basically saying, well, you can only do it every four years and you can only do it in a gubernatorial election year, and you can only do, I mean, these seem to me to be problematic. Why don't we instead, say, in the preceding section, if you're going to adopt this, which I don't necessarily agree with, if you're going to put limitations on it, let the operating factor or the driving force behind that be the rejection of the community in a preceding election cycle, in the general election or special election in which this issue comes for the people, rather than putting this gubernatorial election. And I understand, of course, the need to try to get as much of the population out to vote on initiative as possible as well, but that notwithstanding, we've got an election system set up the way we have. And are we going to deny the people of Guam the opportunity because there's a less showing in the general election where it's a mayoral, not gubernatorial election, to be able to decide policy matters? I think, I think we have a problem here as well. And it's for that reason that I retract my statements with regard to not objecting to this and, in fact, voice my objection to this because of the reasons I just articulated. Mr. Speaker.
Senator Nor, you're objecting to Senator Pangolino's amendment, Section Two? Okay, I want to make sure. On Senator Pangolino's amendment to delete Section Two, are there any other speakers? On the amendment, Senator Pangolino, you have the last word.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, it's kind of ironic because we say we don't want to deny these people, but, and the example used was on taxes, but this body and everyone in this body has that famous line, notwithstanding this section of the public law that requires all taxes and all fees that have been increased to go out to the people in the first place, and we tell them no. And we've all participated in that. So what are we concerned about, denying the people that, when we, by an affirmative action in this body, have denied them that since that law was passed? We've never followed that law, and now we're saying we're concerned about denying the people the right to petition to reduce taxes when we've told, when we've firmly told them, you don't even have a right to vote on them in the first place, which you already have the right to vote by law, but we're not going to let you do it? So it's, you know, to me, that's just a, it doesn't hold water. That argument, to me, doesn't hold water. When you say you don't want to deny the people, but in budgets that this body has passed, that everyone has participated in, we make sure that we put that in there. We make sure that on those issues of greater taxes and greater fees, that we tell the people, you can't vote on it in the first place, but now we're concerned about denying your right to repeal it? I just think that that argument, if we are sincere about that argument, then we should have voted no on every single provision, every time that amendment is placed in the budget bills and on issues, but I don't recall anybody ever saying no on that provision. I don't recall anybody ever in this, except for maybe once or twice. But certainly nobody that's objecting to this now has objected to denying the people the right to vote on those increases in the first place. So I don't understand the logic and the argument placed before this body for that objection because we've been denying the people all along. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Pangolino with the last speak on his amendment, but he wants, I can, call it earlier. Okay. You know, I like to be able to ask Sergeant Adams, you know, to call all the senators that are not in the, in the session hall. One minute recess, please. One-minute recess, please. While those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries. Senator Frank Blas, on the bill.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, I recognize, and I understand, the intent of the legislation, and, you know, and I recognize too, that, you know, there are times when, when initiatives can be a nuisance, and that's what, you know, I'm sure that we, we want to try to, to eliminate, you know, with regards to enough is enough, we've said enough, we don't need to say it anymore, other than, yeah, than what we've said already. But, I do have a, a concern though, and I, and maybe I, if I can ask a question to the authors...
Senator Guthers, with you?
To a question. With regards to who determines the similarity, or whether or not a initiative is similar to an initiative that had been previously, previously been discussed, deliberated, and voted down? Who makes that determination as to the similarity?
Mr. Speaker, we're dealing with election laws, so it would be the Guam Election Commission.
We recognize that, in, in elections past, there has been some, there has been some discussion in as far as who's got what responsibility, and I'm very much concerned of that, because then I don't want this to be cause for litigation, in as far as the determination. And I recognize, again, I recognize what this is for. We just got to make sure that if this is, in fact, the intent of the legislature, that there's teeth behind this, and there is, there's clarity on who's responsible for Because, you can walk like a duck, you can quack like a duck, but it can, but then people can shout from the highest mountain tops and say it's a chicken. So, that is the concern that I have here. I support, again, the intent of the bill, I just need to make, I want to be, get some assurances that it's, it's going to be, it's going to be followed, and there's no, there's no confusion on it, as well, more importantly, as to who makes that determination. So...
Senator Blas, do you, do you want to...
I, I, I'm still looking at this, and I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the body for, in as far as from, you know, some, some assistance, and maybe some discussion, advice on, on, on how we're going to make this clear.
So, let's get, one minute...
Stay close, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You can proceed to speak.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
We're writing an amendment.
Are there any other, so you want a minute break to write your amendment? Okay, one-minute break for Senator Guthers. Senator Rispia, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Ms. Speaker. Since we need some more time to prepare that amendment, I move that we recess until 9:00 AM tomorrow morning.
Any objection? No objection, so the legislature is in recess till 9:00 AM tomorrow.